That's cool.
Yes.
Okay, we are on the record.
Okay.
Yeah. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, please note the following: All Burnsville Borough Planning Board meetings will be held in person and will be held in the second floor of the Burnsville Municipal Building at one sixty-six Nine Brook Road. Meetings will be livestreamed on YouTube with no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public who wish to offer comments or ask questions will be required to attend meetings in person. YouTube livestream access for all meetings is YouTube Burnsville Borough slash streams. This link will also be available on the agenda for each meeting, which is posted on the Borough website, www.burnsvillebureau.org, and on the Borough Hall Public Hall will be more every forty-eight hours prior to meetings. Notice that these changes is also an email to the Burnsville News and the Currier News by posting a copy on the Borough website and by filing a copy will be municipal for all on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. It is the intention of the Board not to continue any matter passed eleven P M at any regular or special meeting of the Board, unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend to a later specified cutoff time, and same shall be announced at the opening of each meeting. In addition, the Board does not intend to begin a new hearing after ten P M nor begin testimony of a new witness after ten thirty P M. Any hearing conducted by the Board is a quietly judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider enrolling a decision. Decorm appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Your call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DiMarco is absent. Ms. Geller?
Present.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Morrison is absent. Mr. Sasso?
I'm here.
Sasso is here via Zoom for the record. Mr. Simoff is?
Anticipated to be party.
Yeah.
Uh, here he is. Anticipated to be present on time.
Do the trumpets.
Okay, Mr. Simoff?
Here.
Mr. Walden?
Here.
And Mr. Zazmarino?
Here.
We have forms of chairman.
Thank you. We're asking about meeting minutes or appointments for the twenty-seventh.
Thank you for being.
Anyone get a chance to review them, I guess?
Two minutes?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see anything that stood out.
Okay. Take a motion, do it.
Motion to approve the minutes from?
March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh.
All right. Call the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, communications. Uh, the request for extension, the request for extension, which we're handling, and, uh, uh, we sent out the, uh, these items that relate to the park recreation festival. Great, any, uh, any business you want?
No, I can't just listen to the parks and recreation discussion today because I'm on this committee and I don't want to bring any help on that.
All right, so we're up to requests for extension of time. Steve?
Sure, the first one we have, I believe, is Echo, and that's an extension of time requesting for, uh, extend one hundred ninety-day initial period for final minor subdivision, uh, which would expire on May second, absent an extension requested for ninety-day extension, uh, with generally grantees, uh, in fact, universities, but my experience guarantees, um, as long as there is some reason given, uh, for the delay, and, uh, there were multiple reasons given in the letter dated, dated fourteen twenty-two-five from this Echo related to, uh, the issue going to the mortgage company as well as other matters. Uh, so if the Board finds indeed that that's a sufficient basis to, uh, for the ninety-day extension, the resolution can be acted accordingly. Uh, and, uh, that deadline will extend from May second to, I believe, it's July thirty-one of this year. Uh, and the only condition would be that the only conditions from the part of resolution remain in, in effect, in, in that, uh, course. So it's a motion, second roll call, I believe, everybody, even if you did not participate in the Echo matter technically, you still, followed by the vote, but you may all participate in the roll call, on hand.
Okay, take a motion.
I'll move to extend.
Second. Go call.
Ms. Geller? Yes. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Simoff?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yeah.
And Mr. Zazmarino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. And the next one.
And the next one, uh, Mr. Chairman, with your provision, uh, it's only the names change, maybe some of the reasons change, but it's a very similar, uh, uh, request and a very similar application to extend. Uh, actually, ten days.
I thought that was, uh,
Yeah, I think I was mistaken, I'm sorry, might, let me just double check that they actually only, yeah, they requested it ten day extension.
You give them longer than what?
Yeah, I, I would, well, that would be a very reasonable improvement thing to do, in my opinion, even though it's not a legal issue. Uh, and I have seen it done many times before when Boards have put their request and said, that's great, but so that they don't have to come back in a couple of weeks, just in case it would be proven to give them longer if it's justified.
Well, even if you have a meaning to extend, you move it to risk.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so, so here, uh, the Board may well want to do that, I'm sure there would be no opposition.
There was supposed to be a hundred, twelve, a discretion of the Board. Um, yeah.
He, he, he did only do ten days, and the reason was, it was, he claims he only needed like one or two days with the mortgage company to straighten it out, but still, I would,
That's never the case.
Plans that everyone's side of caution.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised Mrs. Ellie usually, uh, is quite, um, he, he, he request, yeah, requests, uh, everything he can get, and I mean, in a good way. I don't know why he'd under request him here, but yeah, he'll be proven for the Board if he wanted to do sixty days or whatever.
Or at least till the next meeting.
Well, what about June twelfth? The June twelfth meeting? It gives him six weeks, right?
Just another days in the resolution with, with that guidance.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Sixty days?
Sixty days.
So sixty-day extension, and, uh, let's see, the original date, what, that it was due to expire and searching for, and they're not fine?
It was from May, three, five, yes.
Okay, so what would that phrase do?
From eighteen.
Just add sixty, we'll then pay, and I'll change, can't change it here.
Sixty days.
That's gonna be much further than they said.
Oh, no, 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 it's sixty days from April eighteenth.
Yeah, whenever they, whenever it expired.
So it did, so it did expire in April eighteenth.
Yes, but he made the request.
The request in time.
Yes.
And you can make your request even after the fact, under the statute. Not for a time. Was a little Latin in there, just.
They require the number of days and the date in the resolution.
We have a date in here, so I just want to change it to the.
Change the date?
He will be June eighteenth.
June eighteenth it is. Uh, so with that modification, uh, it's a sixty-day, not a ten-day, and June eighteenth, if the Board is a medical, uh, the Board can move second and, uh, roll call vote and grant that extension as well.
All moving.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Geller? Yes. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Please say yes.
Okay, Mr. Settle?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yes.
And Mr. Zazmarino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And all the, uh, the two resolutions we just handled, right?
Yeah, a little bit redundant.
That's okay, you need to check on.
We clarify that, we won't have to get it.
Uh, and we got the bills. A new business.
Uh, three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Ms. Geller? Yes. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Sasso?
Yes.
Here's Mr. Simoff?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yeah.
And Mr. Zazmarino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And as always, I can, I'll give you the approval to sign the bills.
Thanks. Thank you. Professional, thank you. Those are the work again.
Okay, so, um, we have a discussion item, uh, which is the recreational plan. And, um, John's here, and so basically, review what our next step should be. And then I know there'll be something about timing, which you indicated before, but in terms of the plan and isolation, next steps would be?
Well, we, we need to verify that the changes that we discussed by the Board were in fact incorporated and re-voted document. I, I have a document, it's outdated, but it's, it's a detail. And I checked it against my general authority force, and what are the changes within there?
Okay.
What we recommended is that the next steps would be to, you know, to be more satisfied with the changes, because they'd already been made in the document, and if the document may very well wait to be done. Process would be to schedule a public hearing date. We provide public capabilities, we buy.
Does, do we need one or two public hearings?
One.
Okay.
Only ten days before, it's one difference, and it's not, and it's not a redevelopment. So this is, this, so I will, um, I would ask that the Board, I mean, I don't know, you have the, the changes, the list of changes in the document, and you have that.
We have the list, we have the list of changes.
So, so the public hearing, just make sure. If there are any more edits, I don't know who, who knew that, that was one of those sticky ones we discussed, and we'll, we're gonna come back and, and discuss the changes and present it, and maybe.
Well, sticking point was whether we were gonna have them come back.
Right.
Or no one would be able to, so.
I think we can, right?
Go ahead.
And, and we, we do, uh, we had a discussion on this with the presentation. The changes were forthward, it's sort of, I know, the problem I'm having, it's like, the listing of the explanation changes is outdated, so I'm trying to naturally, so, and they didn't put a revision date on the document they amended, still in July twenty, twenty-one, but so that makes me a little worried, but, you know, maybe we should even verify.
Go through the changes, make sure that's in the document that is posted.
They, you always should put the, the data, it's, it's, I reviewed it, has everything that is on the list of things, but we just need to verify that this is the timeline, I think it is, and we'll head to document.
We need to do another, uh, element of consistency in the terms of like lights are, you know, like things that have been done actually since time. Or removed, uh, I had, I had. Well, like the recommendation for the pillar act is lighting, you know, like there were capital, you know, suggestions, and some of them have actually been accomplished, so. I think a lot of possibilities are needed to do that.
We, that could be, um, I would document, document, and there's always re-evaluation and re-examine it at appropriate times.
Well, we could add comments, you know, as part of the documentation, if we were to do it, by the time we had a hearing, then we, that would be one thing, we could look for updates, fleet breaking, you know, updates.
Well, you don't move to a doc until we've had the hearing, right? Hearing is correct, you have done a hearing.
Of course. But you want to.
Something we can do is, in the resolution, you know, put in whatever changes you want, and do that, put it in Denver.
Yeah.
And then be done with it, we wouldn't have to bring it back.
No.
Yeah, we can do that if we care, do it, and then date that.
Do we have a machine readable of this, or we just have scanned? Or, uh, do we have an unedited PDF?
I have, I have an edited PDF.
I just was wondering.
Yeah, I just have a PDF, the word documents would be, and so.
Becomes part of the master plan, do we need it to be in a certain format to?
No, it covers what it's intending to cover, there's no.
No, no, I meant editable, I mean, you know, in terms of going forward, does it have to be in a?
It's posted.
Yeah, it's posted.
It's posted, you can just post it in a PDF format.
Yeah, you can post it, uh, in PDF format, on the, on your website, and going to the website, you're not gonna message me bottoms.
Yeah.
It could be multiple formats, okay?
Yeah, it says something that's hot, but.
Like a PDF.
They're a PDF.
This is actually a part of the open space, so it's, it's kind of its own thing, it's a separate document, but so, and it's just a murder element, you can have as many elements as you. Sitting too long, I mean, so.
Yeah.
Before, because you see a struggle trying to remember what it's all about, I think the time has passed, so it's something we, oh.
Carrie, um, it's discussion mattering, so, um, do you happen to know if the new Rec Director has read this?
I don't know if he's read it through in its entirety, I remember the previous Rec Director was, the, the, the Board wanted to have a previous Rec Director go through it.
Yeah.
To admit, and see what was already done, and what he had decided, the Board had decided, or the, you know, with the advice of the Rec Committee, what didn't need to be done, or didn't make sense for us, but I do not know, and we've had really limited discussion of it since, uh, the new Rec Director, Tom, where came on the board, uh, so I would say, you know, you have to ask him.
Okay, which I think we should do. Um, yeah, I'm gonna look at it.
Certainly, you'll be forwarded to him.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is to do from the.
Yeah.
Well, we got, yeah, we have a public meeting, and he sits here in recent.
Yeah. This is going to be vital. Than the open space plan. We're gonna follow.
The open space plan is pretty old, and it's, it needs a look.
Always.
Yeah, this is, this thing, but yes, so it's, it's, and we just had a change in in the position, so it's, it's important that we, we do that.
But we should forward with a date. You know, a date for response.
Yeah.
Deadline. All underlined, all.
With the viewer text for the date, too. Just. Anything else, any other, actually, any other comments or recommendations for us?
Uh, no, I, I don't think so, not, not, not anything that I can currently bring from, from where, at this point.
Yeah.
I know, you know, I've briefly touched on it just in a conversation some months ago.
Yes, we did, a while ago.
Yeah.
I relents. It was at an event, one of their events.
It was, it was last year, though, it was twenty twenty-four, I don't.
No, it was Halloween or anything.
It was the Halloween event, I think, yes, Trumper Street, we were at Trumper Street from the, from the training.
Pretty.
That's a good, I was on that.
Those rec events.
So should we set a base? Well, the, the only thing I would say is, as the Board is aware, um, the, uh, there's a particular statute that requires a particular element, uh, of the master plan to be adopted, uh, endorsed by the government body, you know, later than June thirtieth.
So separately from this, which rather than this.
The housing element, fair share plan, which may also require associated there with, or shortly thereafter, they find it, uh, the residency. What it should happen is, once you face that, once you get into the housing element, fair share process, there are going to be land use changes, probably stemming, I'm not sure, on, apparently, so I don't, well, but I anticipate that we're going to be, once you do that, when I go, we can, we can, we can master plan element update with it, so that they're, they're, when we get the order to implement, it still exists.
No.
So I accompany implements with the, with the, we sometimes, I've learned, we act as part of it, I'm doing that in, in now. Uh, but I'm, you're gonna need to do land use, I'm sure you're gonna, I asked that question on purpose. If we're going, but, here's the point, once you're land, you're land use, uh, that triggers the, the requirement, the, the C R Ds, the J, the climate resiliency analysis. Yeah, and I'm, I've kind of chucked the gun.
Yeah.
If the housing element and fair share plan requires an amendment of the land use element, then we will be required to do the climate resiliency assessment, and it's not a separate and independent planned element, as I intended, but it is a.
An assessment.
An assessment.
Yeah, and, and the best way to do it is to do the land use element amendment would be assessment of it, in as part of it, in the public. We don't know, we don't know, we're not moving, nobody's done that.
But anyway, to, to bring it full circle, so that, my only point, uh, from a practical and pragmatic standpoint with the Board is, um, regardless of whatever else we have on our plate in the next two months, we're gonna have a heavy, uh, we're gonna have the full plate for the next two months, uh, for the next, so, um, so I'd be wary about scheduling things that as much as important as it is, and as time-sensitive it may be, um, July, August, September would be infinitely better than May or June, in my opinion.
Oh, better.
Benefit of the, uh, and the Board, Mr. Se, Mr. Tebow individually perhaps as well. That would be my only suggestion.
Well, I don't mean, um, do we have to worry at all, Carrie, do you think about when we have the meeting, the hearing in terms of people being away, or anything like that?
The Rec Committee doesn't meet in July and August.
That's true, okay.
Um, and so there, there is that, we wouldn't have a chance to have any discussion if you wanted to have a meeting, that's not going to take place after May, but I do believe we'll have a maybe. Um, that doesn't mean that Tom will not be around.
Did you have a June meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think we really did, I really don't remember, but, um, it, I, I don't remember about June, I'm sure July and on, or how.
So we want to be through crack, or adjustments, or, or familiar, you know, re-familiarizing by, um, at the end of June, anyways, and we.
I think we have a June.
You know, and we, and we, and, and that's coincident, we're, we're gonna be doing other stuff through June, like you said. Right?
Yeah, my point is, you may wish to wait until July, or August, if that.
Well, I'm agreeing, what I'm saying is that's.
In that case, I'm gonna stop, I was taught the law to, when you're winning these things, you sit down.
It's on the date, and so you have to have this back. Well, it, it needs to be back, you know, June fifteenth or something, or maybe with the next, maybe we should hold it open for response. Hold it open like the Rec Committee.
Does the Rec really have this mo, this latest iteration that you've been referring?
It's old.
Yeah, with the changes where you, uh, remove some of the.
It's a, it's a draft, we need to verify that the, the, the platform we have is the final draft, it, it, I think it is, I will, I will also, we, we again, make sure that it is set around, and you'll get it after work.
Send, send the time and set it.
And the good news is that there's not a tremendous shot for it.
Okay.
That we could have the hearing for the Rec in July. Well, or depend, whenever, whenever we're ready, July, August, September, whenever Rec's ready, you know.
Well, we could schedule it at that point.
Was that?
We could schedule it when we get close to the. That should be one of the feedback requests, yeah. And is the, like.
Do you need more feedback?
Does he want it adopted sooner or later, is, you know, is there anything pressing in it that he would like?
I don't know, it's been, although it hasn't been. And it hasn't really come up too much, we have been operating under the assumption that we're just proceeding as it is going to eventually happen.
Right.
Yeah.
It's guidance, yeah.
Yeah, and it seems reasonable to do that.
Uh, anything from the standpoint of the councils and budgetary planning? As far as you know.
That's, I mean, that's common with, you know, I don't, it's just coming way, so now that's, I mean, that's already done. Um, or that, or, you know, that's wrapping up another works for the year, so, I don't, I think.
For fiscal year from twenty-five to twenty-six.
No, no, no.
No, oh, no, I, oh.
It's a calendar year.
It's a calendar, yeah, because we, so we adopted it late, so we actually adopted it during the beginning of the fiscal year.
For twenty twenty-six. Capital expense, funding, anything, when's the date you need it? To, when's the date?
Again, we're not gonna be working on the next years in February.
I'm just checking, that's right, so, pause, and so we do in September, you, you didn't want the information, you know, you have to cover anything, or shit funds, or do whatever.
I see.
What's the point, I'm, I'm trying to think of various dead ones, and when it is. So that's another one. I think, I think one of the key things we want to ask is, is if he, if they get a chance, he gets a chance to go through it, and the Rec Committee realizes it again, you know, like, here's the latest. Do you guidance from you guys, do you want us to, like, bring it up for review in September, you know, or or do you, do you want us to?
Kind of push it to.
Or do you want us to do it in August, you know, or July, or, you know?
Okay.
Uh, it's just one, what, what's his, what, what are your guys' collective?
Do you want me to bring that up to him?
Yeah, you can, you know, you can say you're in the meeting, there was a discussion, you can frankly, you know, how the discussion's going, and then we'll, we'll have to reach out directly, you know, with the.
Yeah.
The final form and the request for an internal.
And the question. Whether we've got the chances to. He, he doesn't have any.
A lot of it's prioritization, you know, Matt had his own wishes in terms of prioritization, and it's an important vote.
Right.
Uh, this, in sort of.
Ask people what they want to do, and that's, that's all in there.
Yeah, I know, mm.
Some of those items are not the big money items, they're the things that.
Yeah. Hey, he just made, oh, he has his own opinion, that's all, I mean, just like the prior director has his own opinion, I disagree with some of them, but I can see he has his own opinion about different projects. I'm just gonna help him and.
And can I mean, and say that this, there was a discussion that they're, they're going to be adopting, but, and you will be receiving the latest and greatest if you haven't already, and let's talk about whether we, you know, whether we want to put in any priorities.
Yeah, and use the word public hearing, you know.
Public, before the public.
There'll be.
And when do you want to have? Yeah.
There's, but there's public hearings that could be until after July third, uh, June third.
Right, and, and they prefer July.
No, it is getting siffer than the public hearing day, his deadline, or you're coming back to his deadline.
Yeah.
His deadline will be sooner.
Yeah, you'll be setting that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, is that a sound like a reasonable approach?
Yeah.
So, it's plan for plans.
Um, you already brought up the, the spoiler, basically, the, you know, the whole thing that we're gonna need for this, we're gonna need to be focusing on what you have just described.
Correct.
Okay. Any other dispatching? Okay, great. No public hearings?
If I may ask one question, though, with, uh, your, your views of hanging applications, do we have anything in the pipeline?
No.
Little.
No.
I wanted to make sure when I moved it.
No.
The, the Board of the Junction keeps getting them, but.
I think.
That where?
Take like fourteen.
Yeah. Okay, this is how everybody, the whole good planning board applications go after June third.
Okay, because the visitor is none.
That was interrupt.
And then we're gonna do executive session. And Carrie, when, so we're gonna do executive session, when we come back, we're just gonna come back really briefly, do something, so. And Carrie, when, so we're gonna do executive session, when we come back, we're just gonna come back really briefly, do something, so.
Be, be of assistance if I could, um.
Yeah, so you know, you know.
Thank you, Graham.
Well, do you have business of visitor second round?
I just finished.
Oh, that was that, I didn't hear you, okay.
No, no, I mumbled it up here. She's the same visitor.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah. Resolution, we drop the assets, and standard that, uh, the base will circulate in advance next time if we can, but, uh, whereas.
Is this an, are we?
Where, 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 no.
Where are you?
Eventually, you might be. Um, the, uh, but we're, you know, in order to go into open and closed session, uh, whereas, uh, ten colon four, day twelve, the open public meetings act, there is exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and where necessary for the planning board to discuss in the session, not only is it a public certain matters, but letting uh, uh, authorized by N B S A, pinch board, four, eight, twelve, the seven, uh, that is the, the beginning of the privilege, uh, exception. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the planning board, the public shall be excluded from the discussion of the here and after specified subject matters. One, the general nature, uh, is litigation entitled, uh, Duff versus Planning Board and Equine Properties currently pending in Somerset County Superior Court, document number S O M, they have L, they have five, four, six, they have the five, and all related proceedings. And two, the general nature of this subject is litigation also, entitled A R at Fernerville versus Planning Board, uh, which is currently pending in Somerset County Superior Court, by division, bearing document number S O M, L, they have one ninety-one, they have twenty-five, and all related proceedings, it's anticipated that deliberations conducted in closed session, uh, may be disclosed to the public upon determination of the planning board, that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, the resolution shall take effect immediately, motion second, and, and, uh, voice vote is sufficient to go into executive session.
I'll motion, I'll move to go into executive session.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In order, I'm gonna wait and make sure that we're completely in closed session before we begin.
Correct.